Recording in progress.
Welcome and Happy New Year, everyone. I call the January 4th, 2022 regular city council meeting to order. Right now, I'm going to invite you to recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me, so please unmute your microphones and turn off your video while we display the banner. And I will give everyone a moment to do that. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. Into their republic. Which stands. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we move to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings is still in effect. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing and verbally. Sign up sheets were provided to my office via link on the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing of the city on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided for the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen to the live meeting. If you've called in, we ask that you mute your device so as to not interfere with the meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. At this point, I'm going to take a moment to call roll by position number. Please say here when I call your name. Councilmember Zornz?
Yeah.
Councilmember Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Alderks?
Here.
Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Councilmember Manki?
Here.
Councilmember Dore?
Here.
Councilmember Alkabra?
Here.
All present. Now, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly, pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Use your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn off the sound as there is a delay. For all councils, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom when you wish to speak, and I will call on you. Speak clearly, pause frequently, and remember to mute your mic when not speaking. The first item on the agenda is the meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's meeting agenda? Seeing none, at this time, I will call on Judge Mauro Rosano to administer the Oaths of Office to Councilmembers Zornz, Alderks, Manki, and Alkabra.
All right, council members, please raise your hand, your right hand. And repeat after me. After, when we begin, it's going to be I, and I expect you to put, to fill in your own name there, all right? So I.
I.
Hi Jenny Alder.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
Affirm.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Washington.
And of the state of Washington.
And the ordinances of the City of Bothell.
And the ordinances of the City of Bothell.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And impartially.
And impartially.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of city council member.
Of city council member.
Of the City of Bothell to the best of my ability.
Of the City of Bothell.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, everyone.
Thank you.
You're muted, Laura.
Sorry. Next, we have visitor comment. In keeping with Governor Jay Inslee's Emergency Proclamation 2028 regarding open public meetings, the city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted sign up sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. And so we did receive zero, we didn't receive any written comments, but we did receive two people who signed up to speak live tonight. The first one, we'll panel him in, is Andrew Nelson. So if you give me just a minute, we'll get him. And we'll be in.
Hi there.
Hello, Andrew. You have three minutes which to speak, and your time will start now.
Excellent. Well, thank you, guys, and welcome, Councilors Manki, Alkabra, and Alderks, and welcome back, Councilors Orns. Today, I wanted to talk about the selection of mayor, and obviously, I don't have, I don't have a pick, but I do want to say who I would like to be our next mayor, which is Mason, who is Mason. I think Mason's an extremely hard worker. I think that he's obviously retired for his position, and personally, I'll tell you, most of his votes I really liked. I maybe distributed with you once, Mason, so I think he'd be a great mayor. Deputy Mayor, I think, needs to be somebody who is a good community organizer. Someone who can really, people can really rally around. Because, you know, I did a lot of, some doorbelling this summer, and a lot of people just weren't really informed, and maybe that's just part of living in a relatively big city now. But, you know, I think we just need to get more people at that table, and I think that I've seen Jenny Alderks and Rami Alkabra do it a million times, you know, get people to join together and have good discussions. I think either of them would make a great pick to be deputy mayor. So those are my picks, Mason for mayor and Rami or Jenny for deputy mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on the list, we have Greg Smith. We'll give him a moment to walk the hallway here. Greg, whenever you're ready.
There we go.
You'll have three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Tonight, I wanted to talk about the King County Cities Climate Collaborative called the K4C. King County started the K4C to address climate change. Cities that joined the collaboration pledged to develop and execute plans to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. The targets are 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. About 40 cities in King County, 17 have joined the coalition, but Bothell hasn't joined yet. People for Climate Action is a citizens group working to encourage King County cities to join the coalition. One of their actions is to hold summits where people from around King County, working and advocating for greenhouse gas reductions, come together to share and discuss ideas. The next summit is being held January 13. And I'd, I'd like to invite all the council members and city officials to attend. Some of you have attended past summits, and I believe it was thought to have been worthwhile. It will be in the form of a Zoom webinar, and I've attached in my written submission a link where you can register to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all I show for those wishing to speak. If there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak under visitor comment, please use the raise hand function, and we will panel you in. I'm not seeing anybody. So with that, we will move on to AB 22-001, the election of mayor and deputy. I am going to read the procedures as follows. I will call for nominations. Each member of the city council is permitted to nominate one person, and nominations do not require a second. A nominee who wishes to decline will do so at this time. Once all nominations have been made, I will close the nominations. If there's only one nominee, the election will be conducted by voice vote. If there's more than one nominee, the election will be conducted via the chat function in Zoom. Ties will be conducted via coin toss. Once the mayor is elected, we will conduct the election of the deputy mayor in the same manner as we've done with the mayor. I will now call for nominations. Councilmember Dore?
Thank you, Laura. It's my pleasure to nominate Councilmember Thompson. One thing that I know about Mason is that he does the work and has spent the last several years delving deep into transportation and land use policy, which is a lot of what we do on city council, most of what we do. And he has a vision for Bothell and for accomplishing these things with this particular council, all of us.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Councilmember Zornz?
Sorry, I wasn't confused. Do I do the yellow card, raise my hand? Sorry about that. So I would like to nominate Councilmember James McNeil for mayor because I believe he is exceptionally well qualified for this position. Councilmember McNeil has served our community on this body for six years and has represented the council on a wide variety of local and regional committees. He is well known and respected. He has also had experience chairing within these meetings. During his time on city council, Councilmember McNeil has made significant impact in our committee, our community, and was instrumental in the important preservation of Wayne Park and served as a community advocate for the successful passing of the NPR SA levy and the Best Starts for Kids levy. He has shown that he consistently listens to the community input and weighs it heavily when voting from the dais. Separate and apart from Councilmember McNeil's qualifications, should he be elected mayor, is that he would become the first black mayor in our city's history. I will be placing my vote for Councilmember McNeil and ask that my fellow council members consider voting likewise.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Seeing none, do either Councilmember Thompson or Councilmember McNeil wish to decline their nomination? All right, thank you. So at this time, I'm going to call and ask you to enter your, your vote into the chat function. I'm going to call you by position number. And so please then just enter your, your vote into the chat function. Please send it directly to me. Councilmember Zornz? Thank you. Councilmember Thompson? Thank you. Next is Councilmember Alderks. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember McNeil. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Manki. Thank you. Next, we have Councilmember Dore. And last but not least, we have Councilmember Alkabra. Okay. Councilmember Thompson has received four votes, and Councilmember McNeil received three votes, so congratulations, Councilmember Thompson. You are now our new mayor.
Thank you, Laura. Are you sure you don't want to keep running the meeting?
I was going to ask you if you'd like to take over or if you'd like me to continue to.
No, I can, I can take over from here as long as you guys will be patient with me.
All right.
Just before we go on, I just want to say thank you to the council. We have a ton of challenges ahead of us over the next two years, but I'm really glad we have this body to address them. We have a really different council than we did last month with three brand new council members, all who ran on good ideas about how we can improve from the status quo, and I'm really looking forward to working with all of you on exactly that. One last thing, Bothell elected council members with diverse ideologies. We don't all think the same things. And when we have differences of opinion, it's essential that we talk about policy rather than people or personalities. This is emphasized in Robert's rule for a good reason. And I'm really looking forward to the next two years' worth of policy discussions, working with all of you. And with that, I will accept nominations for deputy mayor. I'm supposed to do that now. Councilmembers Orns?
Yes. I would like to nominate Councilmember James McNeil for deputy mayor because I believe he is exceptionally well qualified for the position. Councilmember McNeil has served on our community, in our community for six years and has represented us in a variety of local and regional committees. He is well known and respected. He has had experience chairing within these communities and meetings. And during his time on city council, Councilmember McNeil has made significant impact in our community and was instrumental in the important preservation of Wayne Park as well as passing the NPR SA levy and Best Starts for Kids. He has consistently shown to take the opinion of the public and vote carefully from the dais. And separate and apart from that, Councilmember would be the first black deputy mayor for our city. I will be placing my vote for Councilmember McNeil and ask that you would consider the same.
All right, do I have any other? Councilmember Dore?
It's my pleasure to nominate Councilmember Alkabra. He is a very qualified candidate. He's ran a tough campaign, and he would be our first Palestinian deputy mayor, and I'm so pleased to have him on council, and I think there are great things ahead for him, and I hope he'll accept the nomination.
Would either of the nominees like to decline the nomination? Councilmember Orns? Oh, your hand is still up. All right, Laura, can you conduct the vote?
Happy to. So again, we will follow the same process. I will call you by position number, and then please just enter your vote into the chat function. Councilmember Zornz? Mayor Thompson? Councilmember McNeil? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Alderks, position number. Councilmember McNeil? Councilmember Manki? Councilmember Dore? And Councilmember Alkabra? Looks like we have four votes for Councilmember Alkabra to be our deputy mayor. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Tremendous honor to be firstly elected by the people of Bothell because they saw the different voice that got to running for office, and I got voted in by a majority of the people. My experience in organizing the community, getting them around, you know, to unite regardless of their backgrounds, we're not around certain issues that, that are important to them. I feel like I will, I'm very honored that I can and capable of bringing people together in our, in our great city and moving forward to make it more inclusive and more diverse. Thank you so much.
All right, it looks like we can move on to the next agenda item now, which is figuring out who is going to represent Bothell on various different boards and committees regionally. Is there a presentation associated with this?
There is not. Each of you received the 2022-2023 council committee assignment listing, and I sent out a revised one yesterday afternoon, which adds one to the mayor's meetings, which is the mayor's tribal leaders meeting. So my suggestion, Mayor Thompson, would be to go through those one by one and just there's no presentation. We just, if you're interested in.
Perfect. We might as well get straight into the exciting stuff, right? Who? It looks like the first up is the Capitol Facilities Planning Committee. We have three appointments for that. I see Councilmember Manki. I see Councilmember Dore, and I see Councilmembers Orns raising their hands. And I don't see anybody else raising their hands. That was easy. Oh, Councilmember Alderks?
Is there an alternate in that one?
There is not an alternate in that one.
And you've got what you need?
All right, so Councilmember Manki, Councilmember Dore, I just want to make sure your hand is up because you want to be on the Capitol Facilities Planning Committee instead of, okay, perfect. Sounds good. It sounds like we've got our three. The next up is the Human Services Committee, and this is a, inside the council committee where three of us will serve on that. I see council members Dore, Alkabra, Alderks, and Zornz raising their hands. We have four people for three spots, and this meets on an as needed basis.
Mayor, mayor?
Yes.
I understand it right, there's three appointments plus an alternate.
Plus an alternate.
And I'm happy to be that, and I'm happy to be the alternate. Does that make it easy?
That makes it really easy. Thank you. I like easy. The, and somebody on staff is writing all of this down, correct? Thank you. Public Safety Committee, and this is also three appointments plus an alternate. I see Councilmembers Orns, Councilmember Alderks, and Councilmember Alkabra. That looks like three. Oh, Councilmember Manki. I didn't see that. Your, your hand was a similar color to your background. The, so we have three people. Is, is anybody like Councilmembers Orns interested in making this easy and becoming the alternate? That's you, Council, or Deputy Mayor Alkabra?
I'll be all right.
Yes, perfect. All right, the Joint City and Fire District Advisory Board. There are two appointments for that. I see council members Manki and Zornz. You guys are making it easy. Two appointments for the left one board. I also see council members Manki and Zornz. My dad is on a left one retirement right now, so thank you for your service. All right, moving on, we have the Association of Snohomish County Cities and Towns, one informal appointment. And Councilmember Manki, I'm not going to make it through this meeting without saying it's Snohomish County, so your Canyon Park neighbor should be on this, so I'm just going to get it out of the way now. And that's the only hand that I see up. Moving on, we have the North King County Coalition on Homelessness. And I see council members Alderks and Alkabra raising their hands for this. We have one appointment plus an alternate. Do I have a volunteer for the alternate? Thank you, Council, or deputy mayor, Alkabra. Working on this. All right, next up is the Snohomish County Tomorrow Steering Committee. We have one appointment plus an alternate. Not everybody all at once.
The shocking selection is given.
Yeah, I mean, so who wants to be the alternate? All right. I see Councilmember Alderks and Deputy Mayor Alkabra. When do you want to step back? All right, both of you. All right.
I'm wrestling for it.
We'll go Councilmember Alderks, you were, you were the most recent on my computer screen, so we'll, we'll make you the alternate for that.
Thank you.
All right, we have Sound Cities Association. Pick. I know Councilmember McNeil's been serving on this for some time. Do you want to keep doing that, Councilmember McNeil? Works for me. Deputy Mayor Alderks or Deputy Mayor Alkabra, Councilmember Alderks, is that, is that all right with you guys?
I had my hand up first with the alternate.
Oh, and there is indeed an alternate. All right, we will do that. Deputy Mayor Alderks will be, Deputy Mayor Alkabra will be the alternate for that. All right, Raya8, who is interested in watershed? We have one appointment plus the alternate. All right, we have Councilmember Zornz. Somebody's got to love salmon. Like, this is important. All right, thank you, Councilmember Alderks.
Councilmember Alderks, you will not be disappointed. This is a fabulous group.
Exciting to be a part of it. Thanks.
All right, we have a few mayor's meetings. I'm going to skip past those. LTAC. How many do we put? One appointment plus an alternate. I know Councilmember Orns has been doing that, and it looks like Councilmember McNeil would also, would you like to be the alternate, Councilmember McNeil?
Sorry, mayor, is there, is the tribal thing by you? Are you the one attending that?
That is, that was my understanding, is that was a mayor's meeting. Do I, do I have that correct? Okay, good.
Mayor, may I point out, you skipped ELG for 405 and 522.
Um. Uh, those are, those are coming up on the next page, yes.
My understanding with the elected leadership groups for the BRTs is that they are not planning on meeting in 2022. So that's why they're, they're kind of.
And they were not on the most recent version that I downloaded. Um, the all right. Oh yeah, they were crossed out right here. That's why I skipped them and didn't even look at them. I I think if they do plan on meeting in 2022, it won't be hard to find somebody to go to that. All right, in PRSA, two appointments plus an alternate. I see Councilmember Zorn's, Councilmember McNeil and Councilmember Manki. Did you want to be the alternate, Councilmember Manki?
Sure, that's great.
Perfect.
Mayor Thompson, I'm sorry. Can we go back to lodging tax advisory? I've got Councilmember Zorn and then I don't know who the alternate is. Was that Councilmember McNeil?
Uh, yes.
On that one?
No, 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 I'm not an alternate on that.
Oh, all right. Well, in that case, we need a, an alternate for LTAC.
Willing to serve if no one else has a strong preference.
Thank you, Councilmember Manki. I was so excited to get to K4C that I just went ahead a little bit. And it doesn't say how many people we send to this, but I believe it's one. And I don't know if there's an alternate or not. Anybody care to correct me on that?
I don't know. I'm still trying to find out how many. So I would, I would suggest, because I didn't, I didn't get that information. They do have a spring and a fall elected officials workshop. And so those would be invites to all. And then the monthly steering committee meetings, but I did not receive information on how many. So I would suggest maybe appointing one and then alternate.
Okay, sounds good.
If we find out something further, I'll, I'll let you know.
All right, I see Councilmember Zorn's and I don't see anybody. Oh, I see Councilmember Alderks as well. Do I have a volunteer to be the alternate?
I'll be the alternate.
All right, thank you. I might crash one of those too. The group that meets on a monthly basis is a bunch of my friends. All right, East Side Transportation Partnership. We have two appointments and two alternates. Who is interested? All right, I'll take one of these since nobody else seems super interested and I'm on it right now. So I'll take that as along with Councilmember Alderks. Do I have any alternates? Deputy Mayor Alcabra, thank you, and Councilmember Manki. Thank you, staff, for extending Seashore. So we only have one transportation local group to go to. We have U-Dub, Bothell and Cascadia Community College Campus Town Community Advisory Committee. One appointment plus an alternate. Oh my gosh, and I looked up and there were three hands. The, do I have a, do I have a volunteer for an alternate? I don't have any volunteers for an alternate.
Can we advocate for ourselves? Can we advocate for ourselves?
You, you can just say I want to be the alternate. If not, I believe that Deputy Mayor Alcabra said that he would like to be the alternate. And we have one appointment plus an alternate. Councilor Alderks. Are you okay with not being on that? You want to arm wrestle Deputy Mayor Alcabra for it?
Deputy Mayor can have it.
I was going to say.
I thought you withdrew your hand and you left me out there, but whatever, you can have it.
Trying to make it easy, that's all.
All right, we have the Wash dot Executive Advisory Group. I am serving on that right now and I think some context for what's going on there is pretty important. Does anybody have a problem with me continuing to serve on that board? All right. And we have the Community Transit Board, Councilmember McNeil. I believe you're serving on that right now.
Yeah, that's an elected position. So if somebody else would like to go and I'm going to be resigning from that position this year.
All right. Do I have any takers for the Community Transit Board? Okay, I wanted this two years ago and I probably have more meetings than I know what to do with and I shouldn't, but I like transit and I would like to be on the Community Transit Board.
All right, so Mayor, if I may, real quick.
Yeah.
Me, I want to reach out to some of our Snohomish County partners up north and see if you can gain some trust from them as far as getting their support for being on the board. I know it's the Snohomish County cities that are part of that nominating party sway towards the, the north end cities, the Snohomish County city. So it'd be important for you to engage with them early on that.
All right, thank you, Councilmember McNeil. Is that it? I think that's it. Well, in that case, I'm going to move on to our next agenda item, which is council conversations. And just so everybody knows, like, this is going to be your shortest meeting of the year. Councilmember Dorr.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to welcome all of our new council members and congratulate Mayor Thompson and Deputy Mayor Alcabra. And to say that I'm really sad that we're not able to enjoy cake together. It's a real bummer that we can't be together and sharing this in person. But I'm, I'm thrilled to have all of you, including Councilmember Manki, and look forward to working with you this year and hopefully getting a city manager.
Quite a group tonight. Councilmember Alderks.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Councilmember Dorr, for the welcome. It was quite the experience yesterday to, to see the deputy mayor be sworn in and there was a Palestinian drum group that came. There was dancing and that's the most people we've been around. And in a very long time, there was just the experience of, of being able to celebrate with a cultural group to see my kids be able to be involved in that too. Just was really meaningful and special. So congratulations, Mayor Thompson. Congratulations, Deputy Mayor Alcabra. I'm looking forward to, to serving with you and with the, with all the other council members and for the, the welcome to, to council. So thank you very much.
All right, well, I will just say thank you again to the council and to staff. I'm, I'm really looking forward to working with all of you over the course of the next biennium. I'm really excited for what this holds. I guess let's just go do some cool stuff for Bothell and I think with that, unless there's any objection, we can, we can end the meeting. I saw a thumb up. I thought you were going to raise your hand for a second and I was like, I thought I gave him plenty of time. All right, well, I'm, uh, we'll see y'all next Tuesday. I'm looking forward to it.